Good afternoon, everyone. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners work session is now called to order. The date is October 14, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. At this time, I want to ask our board members from Item 2, is there any preliminary items for the next VOC meeting you would like to discuss or have any questions on tonight? And you all can take time to look through. Commissioner Allen, are you good?
Yes, nothing on my end.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Reeves?
Nothing right now.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Item 3, seeing none. We will move on to Item 3 for our work session agenda. Tonight, we have us with us Mr. Allen Morgan. And Mr. Morgan will come up with through our Behavioral Health Crisis Center. And we also have, is Jeff here? Oh, yeah, you, yep. And come on up, Mr. Jeff.
And if I can, if I'm clear, I'd like to ask Chad from Viewpoint.
Okay, and Chad from Viewpoint, please come on up.
All right, I see a sign that says, "Speak into the microphone," so I'll try to follow instructions.
So we have Jeff Thompson, Allen Morgan, and Chad.
Jones.
Jones, all right. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, so I am Allen Morgan. I'm Deputy Assistant Commissioner for Field Operations North for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. Dr. Thompson is the Regional Director for the Metro Region for our department. And Chad is, you can give him your title.
Chad Jones, I'm the Chief Community Officer at Viewpoint Health.
All right, and we should have in your packets, there's a DBHDD packet of your PowerPoint, board members.
All right, so we'd like to just quickly run through something that is coming your way. So we're bringing a Behavioral Health Crisis Center to Clayton County. I think there's, you know, been a public announcement of that a few weeks ago. I'm very excited about this because I'm a 1982 Jonesboro Cardinal, so feel like I'm bringing something back home here.
All right. 1982, we're not gonna say that date again.
Are you all state?
State.
Yes, ma'am.
You all state, okay. Where are you located now?
Our office is at the Floyd Complex, right across from the Capitol. That's where our state office is. Dr. Thompson's office is on the grounds of the State Hospital on Panthersville. And Chad is a bit all over the place with Viewpoint Health. Viewpoint Health is the community service board that traditionally has served Gwinnett, Rockdale, and Newton Counties. And they have recently entered into an agreement to operate Clayton Center to come in and stabilize some things and bring some additional resources. So, so the why, why are we bringing this to Clayton County? And this is from the original announcement that, from Commissioner Tanner, "Building our next Behavioral Health Crisis Center in Clayton County will bring help closer to those who need it. Investing in crisis care means that a loved one, neighbor, or friend has a safe place to go," I'll add, "near home, surrounded by professionals and peers who understand what they're going through." I'll also quote Representative Neal. It's that she says, "It had been a pleasure and labor of love to work diligently to pursue this funding." And Madam Chair, you've been very involved as well as we've had these discussions of bringing this project to Clayton County. So what is a Behavioral Health Crisis Center? It's a 24/7/365 facility, has walk-in access to psychiatric crisis assessment, intervention, and counseling. Treatment teams and peer specialists. So to say a little bit about what peer specialists are, that is a person who has gone through a program of certification, but they have lived experience with behavioral health issues. And they bring that unique perspective to a person who's currently in crisis to really tell them, "I do know what you're going through, and I do know that recovery and improvement's possible." Sometime later, we'll talk about the forensic peer program that we also have. So they work with this group to address the needs of that individual who has walked in, and there are several services available there. So the Crisis Services Center is a walk-in behavioral health center where they do crisis evaluation, they can do short-term intervention. And for people who are experiencing abrupt and substantial changes in behavior, they're in a crisis, this is a walk-in, very much like an outpatient, outpatient center. They provide screening and referral for other outpatient services as appropriate and community resources for those who aren't currently in crisis but feel like they need to get linked up with behavioral health treatment. So, gentlemen, anything you would add to that description? All right. So the second component of a Behavioral Health Crisis Center is a temporary observation unit. We sometimes talk to the, refer to this as a 23-hour ops unit. This is an area typically with, sort of like, you know, if you've been to the hospital with a family member, there's a chair that's sort of a bed, but not really a bed, not really that comfortable, you wouldn't want to be there more than 23 hours. That's what this is for. It's to bring folks in who don't need full inpatient admission, but they do need stabilization and observation. And someone may go from that into the crisis stabilization unit. Now, this is the piece of it that everyone really thinks about, but those other two components are important because they may divert someone and allow them to go right back home with appropriate treatment. So the crisis stabilization unit, that's short-term behavioral health crisis stabilization, average stay of roughly six days. This is to divert people from state hospitals and to keep people close to home, to keep them from sitting in your emergency department at Southern Regional or some other nearby hospital, and shortening those stays and getting them into this level of treatment if they need it. Now, I want to be clear, this is not limited to Clayton residents. So we have behavioral health crisis centers in multiple parts of the state. Viewpoint Health currently has what we would call a crisis stabilization unit plus. It has a small temporary observation unit. They are actually working with Gwinnett County to build a new behavioral health crisis center there. People will come from surrounding counties. This is an emergency receiving facility, meaning that for our law enforcement folks in the room, you're familiar with the 10-13s, this will be a place, there will be a Sallyport in this building where if you've got someone on a 10-13 and they need to go there, they can go there instead of Atlanta Regional to be received and evaluated. They may determine that they need state hospital-level care, but they should at least be received and evaluated at this facility, and that might save some road time for some of our law enforcement personnel. So I want to show you some recent construction. These are just some pretty pictures. I don't know what the one here will look like, there's much to be done on that. This is the River Edge Behavioral Health Recovery Center. River Edge is the community service board in the Macon area. And these are some pictures of their recovery center. I believe those are probably conceptual drawings, but that is built, open, and serving people. That's some more pictures of that location. This is something that we have created in the last few years that I think is probably best in the nation. This is for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, also run by River Edge down in Macon. And it is a crisis center, it's not an emergency receiving facility, but this particular building has what we're bringing to Clayton County as far as some inpatient beds, but limited to people with intellectual and developmental disability and other needs. This particular unit also has a significant outpatient component, which wouldn't be part of the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. Avita Community Partners, which is the community service board in the northeastern 13 counties up around Gainesville, this is, they're recently constructed. This one's probably a few years old, and it is a beautiful building inside and out. Law enforcement folks, there's the Sallyport down in the corner. And on this one, I'll also add, this is a link right here, and since you have this link, and I don't have the ability to go to that link at the moment and open that, there are more photos of that Avita building at that link. I didn't know if those are public domain photos, so I'm just putting the link if you would like to see more about what that might look like. I'm not recommending this architect or this firm in any way, just if you want to see more pictures of what this building might, of what their building looks like, that's there. And I don't know if you guys have conceptual drawings of yours coming online yet, so, all right. Any questions for us?
Board members, are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Reeves, do you have any questions?
Oh, yes. For the Rivers Edge facility in Macon, you said it's open and operational. About when did they open?
Oh, River Edge, that one's been open, the recovery center's been open a few years at least. The Intellectual and Developmental Disability Center has only been open for the last few months. In fact, they're not up to full capacity at this point. I will say, if there were interest, we could arrange visits to go and see some of these facilities. Just let us know.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Allen?
No questions.
And Commissioner Hamburgh.
Okay, is this a regional facility that you're talking about here in Clayton County, servicing?
It would service Clayton and surrounding counties. And occasionally, you'll have folks that come in that may be from out of town that go into crisis, and this would be a location where they could stabilize, we can find out where they're from, and potentially get them home. But yes, it would serve at least surrounding counties. I will say, right now, I'm hoping that Clayton has had some access, and Dr. Thompson would know for sure, but there is a Fulton Behavioral Health Crisis Center that's another one I'm sure they would be happy to have you visit. And it's on Metropolitan Parkway, just south of Cleveland Avenue. And so they also have only been open for about a year, and they are, they've had some staffing concerns as far as getting full staff, but I, we expect them to be operating their full capacity of beds by the end of this month. And so they serve Fulton and surrounding counties right now. I would expect easily to see folks Clayton County, Henry County, potentially, you know, Fayette, possibly South Fulton, but some of those surrounding areas.
Okay, so you all are bringing this to us for what reason? And it, and I'm sure there's more to it, and I'll, what would be Clayton County's portion of whatever it is? Is it a building already? Is there a financial connection?
There is not a building already. There's been some discussion about property that the county would bring to the table. And then we are funding a significant outlay, millions of dollars, to fund the construction of the facility, and then the ongoing operational cost are typically funded mostly by the state. Occasionally, like Fulton County has chosen, because they've had some challenges with staffing, that they've added funding to what we bring. But in most, most areas, we fund virtually all of it. So would you say on y'alls how much, what the county, is the county, are the counties there bringing a portion for the crisis unit?
For what we're doing with our Behavioral Health Crisis Center in Gwinnett County, the county is bringing some operational dollars. Then they're building, they use our funds to help build some of the actual building that they're doing right now. In terms of, I think, Commissioner Hamburgh, you asked a very good question in terms of, you know, is it Clayton County going to be using this, and what is it for surrounding counties? What we're noticing in our area, specifically Gwinnett, is about 85% are Gwinetians. So if I had to give some type of, you know, how much use will Clayton County get out of it, I'd say significant amount of use. Even the couple meetings I had today were with captains of Clayton County Police Department and meeting with different folks like that, and they have no place to go. They talked about, sometimes we can try to go to Southern Regional, but sometimes we, it doesn't work out as well as we want. And so this gives, this is going to give them a lot of relief of where to take someone who's in that crisis care. So I'm sorry, I added a little bit to your question, but I wanted to address that.
No, that's good, that's good. That's good. You mentioned about a location of property. So where's the property?
Chair, is that something we're at liberty to?
Yeah, I don't know if we can.
Okay, well, not. Next thing is, so these other counties that will be, I guess, participants or can use the facility that is proposed here in Clayton, will they have a hand in the finances?
I think that's something we'd have to, we would have to discuss along the way. As Chad has said, typically, you see mainly in-county residents, and with the growth in Clayton. But I think if we get to a point where we track where are folks from, if we need to start talking with those other counties, I think we would collaborate with you to do that, so.
Yeah, because I, well, I noticed you all mentioned about law enforcement.
Yes.
And all, and bringing people.
Yes.
And I can see these other counties bringing in people that they get from.
Well, right now, yes, ma'am. Right now, as an example, our state hospitals across the state are at 100% capacity right now. And so when I started cutting my teeth in this business at what was then Clayton General Hospital on the night shift, it was not unusual.
That's back.
Yeah, yeah, that's the ways. I've been doing this about 30 years.
Clayton General Hospital.
You know, and there was no Riverwoods back then either. We had a 12-bed unit in the hospital. But when we had someone come in that needed involuntary treatment, the sheriff's deputies would drive them out to Panthersville Road, and they weren't typically happy about that. It's a bit shorter drive than some of our rural counties that have to drive to Panthersville Road. But to get right now, if they go, I mean, we're working every day to discharge people. But because the state doesn't have enough state hospital beds right now, quite frankly, it's, we have got to build this capacity. And we would rather have people in their home community rather than having to leave and go to the large state hospital so that only those folks with that really acute, critical level of need would ever have to go to the state hospital. And that people from Clayton County could receive their treatment, even crisis-level treatment here, closer to home and closer to their families and their community.
Other than you being from Clayton County, what, how did you all choose Clayton over the other counties, the Henrys, Fayette, DeKalb?
So we did look at, you know, population density. There was a bed study a few years ago that actually, there was some discussion, there was a debate between here and a county in northwest Georgia. And honestly, we looked at the need in Clayton County and the growth, and just felt like this is, this is a very good location. While there is one in Fulton County, there's another one on the drawing board for North Fulton County. This area of the metro didn't, didn't have this level of services close to home, so.
Okay, it's not a question, but I worked in the building that you work in when they were building it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we were one of the first agencies there. I'm a retired state employee.
Which agency were you with?
The Office of Consumer Affairs.
Okay, okay.
Governor's Office of Consumer Affairs.
We are blessed to be.
Then I worked in the Insurance Commissioner's office.
Okay, yeah.
From one tower, east tower to the west tower.
Yeah, we were talking about the Insurance Commissioner today when one of the elevators wasn't working.
No, this was some years back.
They're in the building, so.
This is years.
Yeah, we are blessed to be there and no longer in the Two Peach Street Tower.
Oh, I was in Two Peach Street.
Yeah, that's, we were there until a few years ago, and I'll take this one.
Did they close it all off already?
Yeah, I think it's been Georgia State and the City of Atlanta have involvement over there. I'm not sure exactly what they've done lately, so. All right, anything else?
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Well, is there a time?
Oh, yeah, time, Brian.
I mean, I would think, what's y'all's timeline on the one in Gwinnett? I mean, I'm, it's probably 24 months, 18 to 24 months, I would think.
So the infrastructure has been built for that already? We're, the one in, I'm sorry.
I shouldn't, didn't follow the rules here. The one in Gwinnett, the infrastructure's a little bit different because we're adding, actually adding outpatient offices and other types of offices. So they've already built that piece of it, so the foundation's already set. So they're set for us to actually open up the BHCC portion of this in January of 2027 is what they're shooting for.
So, okay, so what are you all asking of this board?
Honestly, we're, we're here today just to answer questions and sort of give you an idea of what's coming. We're happy to come back to answer other questions. The chairwoman knows how to reach us, and as does Representative Neal. And if you need any more information from us, let us know specifics, what you'd like us to come back and discuss, we're happy to come back.
Has it been decided?
So.
That Clayton is the spot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Tanner has.
Did we do that?
No, Commissioner Tanner.
Yes, Commissioner Tanner has determined.
Now Tanner, that name, is that the Tanner from back some time ago? Or is this a son?
This is Kevin Tanner, who, he was a state rep from Lumpkin County for quite a while, and then he was the county manager actually for Dawson County and then for Forsyth before he came to us, so.
This was Tanner from, okay, some other part of the state.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for having us.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you. Next on the agenda is going to.
You got another question?
Well, not for them, but for us. I mean, so if they're saying this, are they financing, is the state financing the whole thing, or can they just tell us what we're doing and?
Do y'all want to answer that question real quick before, because as far as the financing, the state will have to, because we, I don't know if we're not.
Yeah, so we've got, basically, between nine and 10 million for construction cost on the facility itself. And then I think the ongoing operating cost brings that, you know, kind of first-year amount to around 17. I think there's an original commitment between around 15, 16 million, somewhere in there. I don't want to be quoted on that amount, but our typical outlay for a new BHCC on the front end is around nine and a half million dollars. And, and I will say, I don't have the full list of staff, but this will bring professional jobs to Clayton County as well.
And I think the other part was sploshing funding, correct?
Yes.
See, I just want to know how much the county will be obligated to put into this. If we being told, we didn't volunteer, we, we've been volunteered.
You know, we discussed, and so it is the, the financial commit from, commitment from the county, I can come back, we can talk about that. But all we're really asking for right now is partnership on the location, so.
Can we have funds that aside for that commissioner?
Did you want to say something, Mr. Tanner?
General, Commissioner, Commissioner Hamburgh, great question. So remember, in our 21 program, we had allocated, because the county was looking at building a crisis, a behavioral crisis facility. We allocated 4.4 million initially in the allocation to build the facility. When the state came to us to talk about a potential partnership, that removed the ability to have to, again, at the, the prices now for build-out, the 4.4 million wouldn't have gotten us the complete facility anyway. With the state coming in, providing funding, we certainly, as Ms. Jackson alluded to, we have funding and sploshing the 21 program to be utilized to help with the offset the costs for the construction. Clearly, we don't have any money associated with actual operating of that.
That's what, that was my next question, so what about the operating?
Yeah, so the 4.4 million certainly, based upon what the needs may be, can be used to help defray some of the costs for the build-out. But I think part of the discussion will be about the operating the facility itself. So once we get to that discussion, clearly, the county don't have any capital to put in as of right now, but certainly having a discussion with the state would go a long way to figure out how do we operate the facility once it is finished with the construction.
Okay.
Right, so part of the negotiation is about the land itself. The county could utilize the funding, the 4.4 million to actually purchase the land, opposed to having to build out if the construction is being handled by the state.
Okay, so I just want to know how much, what, when, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all.
All right. Any other questions at this time, board members? All right, next, we will move to Item 2, which is Local Assistance Grant for my interim CFO, Ms. Angela Jackson.
Uh-oh, what happened?
Ms. Jackson, you want to sit down?
I'm just writing this thing.
Okay. You got to do the clicker. Tetra, you got to help with the clicker.
Okay, so FY '26 Local Assistance Grants.
No, what happened?
Oh, Lord.
I had surgery.
Nobody will answer me.
Not on TV.
Oh, okay. You tripped downstairs, okay.
Not for all that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Talk about it after the meeting, Ms. Jackson, okay?
My bad. What can you say, my bad?
Okay, the application process begins with the Clayton Collaborative, Mr. John Brentson. Applications were made available for download on January 29, 2025. Applications were due back to Mr. Brentson on March 28, 2025 at noon. There was a mandatory grant application workshop on February 28, 2025. You must be a 501(c)(3), registered with the Secretary of State's office, you must be physically located in Clayton County, providing services to Clayton County residents. Applications were then scored and submitted to the Clayton County Finance Department. This is the original list, and we'll review two amendments after we go over the entire list. Alpha Phi Alpha Mentoring Academy received a proposed award of 5,000. They were given a score of 95 by the collaborative and their evaluators. Alpha Phi Alpha mentors the high school boys in ninth through 12th grade that live in or attend Clayton County schools. Alzheimer's Support Center requested 150,000, were awarded 45,000, and scored 100. They provide adult daycare and weekend respite care. Amazing Grace Evangelical Community Empowerment Program requested 35,000 and were awarded 16,000. They feed the homeless, distressed families, the elderly, veterans, and school kids. They also provide rental and utility assistance. Encore Resource Center requested 15,000. The proposed award is 3,000 with a score of 95. They teach English and civics classes to aid immigrants in passing the U.S. Naturalization and Civics Exam. Encore Resource Center, the Healthy Seniors Program, requested 20,000, and the proposed award at this time was zero. We had to reduce the amount of local assistance grants this year in order to keep from increasing taxes on the citizens. Arts Clayton requested 120,000. The proposed award was 85,000. Calvary Refuge requested 80,000. The proposed award is 45,000 with a score of 100. Calvary provides emergency shelter and short-term housing. The Clayton County Community Services Authority, the Community Support Section, requested 264,000, and were, the proposed award is 264,000 with a score of 100. They provide community support, legal aid, and weatherization. Eligible participants may receive utility assistance, mortgage assistance, emergency food, and pro bono legal services. The Clayton County DFAX Family and Children's Services requested 150,000. The proposed award is 93,000 with a score of 100. Clayton County Soil and Water has proposed award of 2,000. The Community Outreach in Action Program requested 35,000 with a proposed award of 31,000 and a score of 100.
Excuse me.
Can we go back up to soil and water?
They provide technical support for erosion and settlement control.
No, 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 the requested amount and the proposed amount.
The proposed amount is 2,000. This year, their director, I think it was their director, had illness in the family and they didn't get their application in time, but we have provided that $2,000 of support to them.
Right.
For many, many years.
Okay.
And it was included in this proposed award, but can be changed by the commissioners.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Community Outreach in Action requested 35,000, were awarded 31,000 with a score of 100. They provide food to the at-risk population. Georgia Showcase Baseball requested 25,000. They have a proposed award of 10,000 and a score of 90. They char. They target the youth in foster care to development through the sport of baseball. Good Shepherd Clinic, the Specialty Clinic side, requested 50,000. The proposed award is for 30,000. They provide primary medical care. Haley Bankhead Foundation requested 100,000. There's a proposed award of 10,000 with a score of 95. They serve, support, and encourage those affected by childhood cancer. Hearts to Nurish Hope requested 60,000. There's a proposed award of 45,000 with a score of 100. Development of Responsible Men, ages 18 to 24, alternative education, food pantry, workforce development, emergency shelter, independent living, et cetera. You have the Hope Shelter, requested 10,000, proposed award is 10,000. They provide housing for homeless mothers and their children. The House of Dawn requested 50,000, the proposed award is 25,000 and a score of 100. They provide housing and supportive services for young mothers and their children. I Am King Mentoring requested 20,000, a proposed award of 5,000 with a score of 95. It's a mentoring program for boys ages 5 to 19. They teach self-awareness through literature, motivational speaking, life skills, public speaking, teamwork, time management program launched in 2008 with eight boys. It now has 150 boys. Melanated Pearl requested 100,000. The proposed award is 3,000 with a score of 95. National Association of Black Military Women requested 25,000 with a proposed award of 3,000. NVS Building Communities Program requested 100,000 with a proposed award of 5,000 and a score of 95. They provide the youth and their families of Clayton County tutoring, social services, arts and science programs, nutrition, and physical recreation. Prevention Plus Doing Business as the Bridge Incorporated requested 50,000. The proposed award is 25,000 with a score of 95. Academic Development to Marginalized Youth, Post-Secondary Pathways, College and Career Readiness, Workforce Development Opportunities, Job Training, Career Coaching, Life Skills, Financial Education, Financial and Food Assistance. Ujima Way, the Peach Program, requested 20,000. The proposed award is 10,000. It improves the lives of high-risk and less fortunate individuals. Prevention and intervention for high-risk court involved youth and young adults, life skills, and career readiness. Ujima Way, the ERAPS Program, requested 10,000. The proposed award is zero. Walking in Authority Learn for the Youth requested 73,500. The proposed award is 5,000 with a score of 95. They're committed to raising awareness and providing peer-driven responses to critical issues such as anxiety, depression, bullying, and youth suicide. We have several new requests this year. The first one is Christian Life Center Worldwide. They requested 75,000. Unfortunately, this year, we did not propose any additional funding for the majority of the new request. Christian Life Center provides childcare, housing assistance, and utility support, food pantry, financial literacy and education, holiday support programs. You have the Clayton Center, children, young adults, and families. Serves ages 3 through 21 with emotional disturbance and mental health, illness, and substance abuse issues. They requested 100,000. Clayton Center Community Support Services, and all of these, by the way, are part of the Community Service Board. Clayton Center Community Support Services requested 150,000. Clayton Center Residential Services Program requested 200,000. Clayton Center Substance Abuse Disorders requested 100,000. The Clayton County Chamber Foundation Fit Program requested 50,000. Enrich Kids Now requested 10,000. Grandma Betty's Back to School Give Back requested 10,000. And she provides help for children with incarcerated loved ones on both of her programs. The next one is Grandma Betty's Costumes, Coats, and Candies. She requested 3,125 dollars. Grandma Betty's Holiday Give Back, she requested 10,000. New Vision Christian Church requested 15,000. Serves meals for those challenged in the community every first Friday of the month. They also provide clothes and personal items. Sisters Empowerment Network Rise Training Program requested 5,500. They provide free services to domestic violence survivors and the community at large. The Online Food Pantry requested 235,390 dollars. It's an online service that allows food outlets to donate their surplus and leftover food online. These are funds that are currently in the budget. The first two are funded from the State Drug Fund, the Securus House, and Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Center. Securus House requested 85,000, proposed award is 65,000 with a score of 100. Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Center requested 75,000. The proposed award is 35,000 with a score of 100. You have Clayton Center Mental Health requested 500,000. The proposed award is 369,000 with a score of 100. And you have the Department of Human Resources Health Department requesting 698,000. The proposed award is for 698,000 with a score of 100. The First Amendment is Commissioner Allen's amendment. She would like to reduce DFAX by 20,500, leaving 72,500 for the DFAX FY26 allotment. She would like to increase Melanated Pearl by 15,000 for a total FY26 allotment of 18,000. She would like to increase Sisters Empowerment Network from zero to 5,500. That concludes Commissioner Allen's amendment. Commissioner Reeves' amendment, she would like to reduce Arts Clayton by 35,000, leaving 50,000 for the Arts Clayton FY26 allotment. She would like to reduce Hearts to Nurish by 35,000, leaving 10,000 for their FY26 allotment. She would like to reduce DFAX by 50,500, leaving 42,500 for their FY26 allotment. She would like to increase the Community Service Authority by 30,000, but make it for eviction mediation. For a total for Community Services Authority of 294,000. She would like to increase Calvary Refuge by 19,000 for a total of 64,000. Increase Amazing Grace from 16,000 to 25,000. And increase Good Shepherd, the Mental Health Clinic, from 5,000 to 10,000. She would like to increase Melanated Pearl from 3,000 to 25,000. Increase Ujima Way ERAPS from 0 to 10,000. Increase Ujima Way Peach from 10,000 to 30,000, and increase Sisters Empowerment Network to 5,500. And that concludes the presentation for the local assistance grant.
All right, board members, are there any questions at this time?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner.
When are we going to make decisions? Because in the past, the agencies have been in need of their funding from us. What is this, October? I think we've done this in the past around August or September. So I think we need to go ahead and make a decision and all, and I have questions on some of these additions.
It can be put on next week's meeting for approval. I just need the changes per the board.
So we send them to you?
Yes, ma'am, any changes that you would like to be drafted in the form of an amendment? If you would send them to me, I'll have them drafted and then the board can vote next week.
Okay, now, I'm looking at something that's highlighted.
Those changes were put on your desk, those are the changes from Commissioner Reeves. And the highlighted items are all items that were changed, either increased or decreased, from the original that was provided at the last work session where this was discussed.
Are Commissioner Allen's changes reflected on this document as well?
They are inside that document, but I have a separate form with just Commissioner Allen's in case they chose to vote for just one or the other, in case the board decided to vote for one or the other. Those were passed out via an email that was received. So all the highlighted items are changes that we reviewed based on Commissioner Reeves' amendment.
Okay, so the amendments, I've noticed we didn't get an explanation of what they do.
I'm sorry. What the difference?
What the different agencies is?
Some of them showed up here. Yes.
So Commissioner, do you want a copy of what, kind of what you? Can you send us a copy of what you?
In the meeting today, right, just send me a copy if you don't mind of what these additions, the recommendations that were sent in, of what these groups do.
Oh, what the groups?
Right.
I sent out a master list of the different agencies, organizations, but I will resend that to the group.
Was it, did it include the new ones, the additions?
Yes, ma'am.
I know it had the old ones.
Yes, it's on the last page of the description list. Just gives a brief summary of what those particular agencies do. And if you'd like more detailed information?
No. No, just an overview.
But when you say new, these are added, they were already awarded, the amount was just adjusted. So they're not new organizations to the county, they, we just increased. So like, for instance, Melanated Pearls, she was awarded or proposed 3,000. I requested her to receive more, so she's not a new organization. She, I just requested she receive a little more money.
I've never seen Grandma Betty.
But she's not. Oh, okay, I thought she meant, okay, I thought you meant the ones that I suggested to have an increase. Okay, I got what you're saying, okay.
This list on the screen now, those are all new organizations to this application process? Yes, those definitions though are included, but I will send that out to you to make sure that you know that this. And they're going to be on the final page of the descriptions.
Any other questions at this time?
Yes. Oh, I just had a question about how the 780,000 dollar amount was determined when it was put in the budget. What did that, what did that process look like? I don't remember having a conversation with the board around how much money we were, we determined to set aside for local assistance grants. So I'm just curious about when that determination was made in the budget process.
I thought the Budget Committee did that.
We didn't decide on.
We discussed it then, because in the process of trying to balance the budget, that was one of the items we discussed originally, it was in the budget, maybe like 900,000. But in order to balance, we went through iterations of things that we needed to do to balance that particular budget. And we discussed it in those meetings. And that number just happened to be some, one of the things that got reduced down to the 780.
Okay, so when you did the rebalancing, that's when the number, that specific number for the local assistance grants, that's when it was changed?
No, ma'am, it was 780 in the original document.
All right, any other questions at this time? All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next will be the search form for my HR Director, Ms. Pamela Ambles.
Good evening, Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. I'm Pam Ambles, HR Director, and also citizen of District 3. This evening, I would like to provide the board with an update on the recruitment process for our CFO. The objectives, the objectives is to provide an update, summarize human resources current process, obtain feedback from the board regarding the recruitment process, and also obtain feedback from the board regarding the use of a recruitment firm. So currently, Ms. Angela Jackson is serving as our interim CFO. She was appointed interim CFO on May 24th, 2025. Time served in this position thus far is almost five months. We want to publicly thank Angela for her service to Clayton County. So thank you, Angela. I want to talk about our recruitment process, and I promise I'll be brief. Our recruitment process for our executive level staff, we, first of all, we establish an interview panel. That panel consists of internal stakeholders as well as external experts. We are very, very focused on getting these, having these experts to be a part of the process so that they can help us identify industry-specific factors that we need to be looking for to make sure that we are engaging our best efforts to get the individuals that we need. We're not looking for people who are looking for a job, we're looking for people who are looking for a career. During the last round of interviews, our Fulton, Fulton County CFO, Henry County CFO, and the CFO of the Ward Authority was part of the interview panel. The role of the panel, of the panel is to review applications to select the best candidate for interview, develop questions and other tests or tools that we may want to use to help us evaluate the candidates. The interview panel interview candidates, and generally, we select the top three to interview with the Board of Commissioners. Human Resources is seeking feedback from the board. We already have a very collaborative, manpower-intensive recruitment process. Three candidates were selected during the last round of interviews. In the Board of Commissioners, you all interviewed those candidates and declined to select either one. Before we start round two, we would like feedback from the board. One of the questions I'm asking is, does the board want to assume a more active participative role at the beginning? We're also going to talk about a recruitment firm and human resources position on that. I want the board to know that we are not at a loss for applications. Overall, Human Resources has processed over 17,000 employment applications for 2025.
For the CFO?
No, ma'am, overall, not for the CFO. No, over, overall, 17,000. Yeah, over, overall. We have a $5,000 advertising budget, we're very appreciative of that. But you know, $5,000 doesn't get a lot when you're talking about advertising. But once again, we are appreciative of that. We have identified innovative, free methods that we use. One is our 2025 Annual Career Fair that will be held tomorrow. We're looking forward to that. We have our departments who will showcase, their departments, as well as some external partners who will be coming to participate in our job fair. So we have, we, once the board did not select anyone, we restarted the process. Thus far, we have received 94 applications. And 57 of those applications, we were able to certify as being eligible to compete. Now, this is a 61% ratio of those who applied versus those who were actually qualified. So that's a pretty high percentage. You know, everyone who applies for a job, that doesn't mean that they are qualified. So we go through the certification process. Mr. Ryan Shaw, he was gonna come up and do this part of the presentation, but Ryan had an emergency and had to leave. I tasked Ryan and Noi, she's back here today, my HR team, Carol, Angela, and Noi, they are here today. Thank you all. I tasked Ryan and Noi with researching and reviewing recruitment firms. And Ryan selected Robert Haff as a possibility. He selected this firm because they are experienced working with government agencies. They work with the public, Clayton County Public School System, as well as some city municipalities. They are already registered with us as a vendor. Their vetting process include interviewing the candidates three times, professional reference checks and so forth. They will not charge us unless we hire their candidate. And they do offer refunds or a free replacement in case that person does not work out, but it is quite expensive. They, the charge is 20% one-time fee if we hire one of their candidates. Now, that's 20% of the salary for the position, so that equals about $40,000. So HR is recommending that we bypass using a recruiting firm. We reevaluate the selection process based on any feedback that we may get. We reevaluate the selection process based on any feedback that we may get from the board. We do have that high ratio of the applicants who actually met the minimum qualifications. We want to continue to utilize our internal and external partners and experts to review the application. As you can see, we're not at a loss for getting applications. We do believe this to be more cost-effective. Timeline moving forward is we want to retain the, if we retain the current process with or without any revisions that the board may have. It is ambitious to select by the end of the year. A more feasible timeline to select may be by the end of January twenty twenty six. I do want to say we're very fortunate because we do have an effective stopgap measure in place with the interim CO, CFO serving in that role. So I want to end the presentation, first of all, by thanking you all again for having us and to ask if there was any questions and if the board has any feedback for me at this time.
All right, board members, are there any questions at this time?
Yes, I have a question. Okay, so your recommendation is to, you said bypass using the recruiting forum, and then HR, I guess, you guys would go through the same process again? Can we, for the external panel, are we gonna switch those people out? Or if we choose to go that route, are we gonna keep the same panel?
We probably will restart, just restart the process, Commissioner. Now, we are saying that we will want to keep the same process we have, but now if the board has anything that you all feel that we need to do differently, as I said earlier, I don't know if the board wants to be a part of the process upfront. That's, that's the feedback that I'm looking for because this process is very collaborative, is very manpower-intensive. And I don't want to, I'm gonna be honest with you, with the resources that we have, I want to maximize them. I don't want my team, you know, investing in a process that is broken or one that is not going to work. And that's why, that's one of the main reasons why I'm here today is to see if there's anything that you all feel that we could do differently. And one of the main things, like I said, I don't know if you all want to be included upfront, on the front end of it versus being at the back end and just interviewing the candidates that we bring to the board. That's what we're trying to get some clarity on.
So for me personally, I don't wanna be involved in the front end. I emailed you already my suggestion, you know, with the presentation part. So that's my take, so if we're going to, if we do decide to just go back with the same process, how early can we begin?
As soon as I get the feedback from the board, we'll go ahead and get started.
And then my last question, so are we going to pull the applications from the new applicants? After, you know, after we did the interview, so all new applications or we're gonna look back at the old applicants as well too?
We're, we're moving forward with the ninety-seven that we have, I think I said ninety-seven. Those are the new, those are new applications.
These, these ninety-seven came after we interviewed the other three?
It, yes, ma'am. Once we restarted the process, it's either ninety-four or ninety-seven, but the ninety-something applications that, that I spoke of to this evening, they're brand new, the ones.
Any other questions?
Yes. On this search firm, you have, the purpose of your presentation is to provide the board with a recruitment resource for our executive level position.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I hear that we've already been interviewing for the DCOO. So what process of what, what am I missing? Yeah, was there a firm that got these candidates? Or will there be a firm, a process or whatever, so what, what's going on?
No, ma'am, we did not use a firm, I can't use a firm until I get the board's permission because there is going to be a funding implication. But in all, in, in reference to that, I'm going to defer to DCOO Stanford. I mean, I'm sorry, Dietrich, Lord have mercy, COO Stan, Chief Operating Officer Stanford.
Say it's your question, Commissioner Hamburg, the difference there is the positions in question, department heads, the Board of Commissioners is department head of the department heads. The DCO position isn't a position that answers to the Board of Commissioners, that position answers directly to the COO. So the, what we've used internally to address the DCO's position, we, we actually have an executive staff that have assisted with that process, but what Ms. Ambles has been tasked with is to address positions that the department heads answer to this Board of Commissioners, which is different from the DCO's position. So we use a panel associated with the DCO opposed to department heads. Certainly, that information is vetted by this board as the final decision maker.
So it's not really your executive level positions then? So is this a misprint or?
No, no, ma'am, it's, it's not a misprint. Previously, any, any recruitment, application, selection process that I have used, even for the department head, I have, this is the process, the process that I showed you all, those are the, that's the process that we use. But this, just, and I'm transparent and I'm honest, I was not tasked with the DCOO's interview process. Had I been tasked with it, we would have followed my procedure of establishing a panel and bringing them in, the same process that I, that I always use. But I was not, I was not tasked with that.
Who's interviewing?
The panel, the panel consists of the interim CFO, Chief Staff Attorney, and the HR Director.
Okay. Salaries, a salary. How have you all derived at a salary for the DCOO?
There is a actual posted salary amount that we revert back to, it's starting salary, I think it's one sixty-five if I'm not mistaken.
And, let me say this. We have a, we have a DCOO. Prior to that, we have not had one. If I'm not, let me see, was it back with? Cohelus.
Cohelus.
And that was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? So what's the urgency now to fill this without going through your executive level? Whatever you do, your, your group or whatever, what's the? I mean, we were going, we did without, how many years was that?
Well, so there.
Before we finally came back?
There was a circumstance associated with the reason why we didn't fill the DCOO then.
What now?
Because we actually abolished the position, there had to be a period of time for which we had to.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying. So what's the rush now?
Well, we haven't abolished the position, so that position is now being vacated.
It wasn't filled.
It couldn't be filled. Based upon the statutes that we have in place, if you abolish a position, you can't bring the position back in its present form for a period of time. And so that's when we end up creating the, the Strategic Officer, when we brought Ms. Smith, Dr. Smith aboard, opposed to developing the DCO position, we came with an alternate position. And then once that, that time had elapsed, we were able to bring back the DCO position, that's how we actually ended up with. With DCO.
Okay, I just wonder, what's the urgency now, that's what I'm saying, if we went years without someone, what's, what's, what's going on that I don't know about?
I don't.
And, and the salary.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's so much about urgency.
Going through the process, if you have a process, let's stay with the process.
I'm not sure where we're deviating from the process, I think the executive level staff, the only difference that Ms. Ambles spoke to is that she used outside candidates to be part of department head interviews. We use executive level staff internal to the county to do the very same thing.
Just this time, because we didn't do that before.
We didn't utilize anybody from outside. We didn't use an executive level staff to do any of those things.
Any other questions at this time, board members? Thank you. Next will be, Mr. Matarco, I mean, you can come on up for four and five, Mr. Matarco.
Four is gonna be traffic calming program, and then five will be Terry Boulevard pedestrian sidewalk discussion.
Okay, just one quick question, so what are we doing for the building and maintenance person? Are we doing the, your tracking, are we doing your tracking? What are we doing?
Ms. Ambles.
Where's Ms. Ambles?
What are we doing for the building and maintenance?
Is that considered an executive level position, building and maintenance?
Yet, for the, for the directors, whenever I'm in, I have been tasked with it, I follow the process that I, that I always use. Dietrich, did you wanna speak to that one as, did you wanna speak to that one as well? When, when, when the HR director, I wanna be clear, when the HR director is tasked with establishing the process and, and for the, when I say executive level staff, I'm not only talking about C-suite, I'm talking about the department heads. Because since I've been director, I have, we've hired the police chief, we've hired Parks and Recreation Director. So those type of positions, when I am tasked with it, I follow the procedure that I outlined to the board, that I've outlined to the board this evening, but I'll let Dietrich speak to the Building Maintenance Director.
Yeah, Madam Commissioner, there hadn't been a change from deviating from the HR process. There was a, the panel established, the panel in this case was Director Matarco, Director Parham, the HR Director, and Director Rogers as part of the panel to help go through the vetting process for the Building and Maintenance Director.
So how do we derive at a salary for that position?
It's the salary, all departments have a posted salary. So the person, the person that will actually fill that position was the board makes that determination because the board will make the determination for the Building and Maintenance Director, they will start at the opening salary.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting at, because you know, our folk have been either people that have already been on board and have years of service and all, so I, okay, I just wanna be sure.
Speaking to my.
Commissioner, to confirm the salary, we have our, each position, it has a starting salary. And when we're bringing brand-new people, when I say brand-new, I mean from the outside. What we do is we take that particular salary and we do calculate forward for any colas that we have received, and that is the way that we get that starting salary for a brand-new person. If we promote somebody internally, then their salary is gonna be based on the promotional rules of the civil service, civil service promotional rules. But for a brand-new person, they're starting at the entry-level salary.
So Madam Commissioner, the, the difference here is that we had an internal candidate that had withdrawn, so the candidates that will come before you will be an outside candidate. If the board chooses to move forward, any one of those candidates, they will all, that individual will be a new candidate. So they would not be subject to the promotional, I guess, the promotional opportunities that you would get if it was an internal candidate already in space. So the one internal candidate we had for Building and Maintenance withdrew from the process.
Okay, so everybody is outside? The others are outside?
We have, for Building and Maintenance, we only had one internal candidate. That one internal candidate that would have come before you withdrew from the process.
Ms. Pam, was your question answered, so do you know, you have what you need to move forward in the process?
Unless we have any other feedback from the Commissioners, we'll continue to move forward. We're okay.
Sounds good, thanks for your work.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Ms. Matarco.
Good evening. We're back to talk about traffic calming and try to push this thing over the in-line, I believe. So just a quick, quick overview. The process, as shown on the, on the screen here, is to, it's the same thing as we proposed earlier. Citizens request it, we do a study. We go back and have another community meeting with the, the neighborhood or the street, depending on what, who exactly is asking for it. We get their input, we revise the designs accordingly. You can see in here the, the petition process, the, the values that we've talked about before. And then it comes to the BOC for approval, and obviously, we go through the implementation process. I was very quick on overview, so if you wanna go back to it, we can. The decision points, the major ones that we were seeking input from the board on so we can go forward with an ordinance drafting, I've kinda highlighted the ones you've given us direction on before, or the ones that we have, we have proposed from a technical standpoint. The initial petition of twenty percent property owners for a formal HOA request. We, we spoke about the eighth percentile speed to document that there is a speeding problem in the neighborhood and a traffic volume per, value. So we're not addressing something that there's only a few cars on the street at the time. Based off of the feedback from previous meetings, the percent approval at the end of the, end of the day to go forward would be fifty-five percent of the, excuse me, property owners again. And the direction that was given was any funding would be, on annual basis, would be applied as a line on, on the property tax bill. The item that we did not have consensus on and you wanted more information on was a potential funding model. We, we can do a variety of different things, obviously, a hundred percent county-funded, a hundred percent community funding, or a combination of it. The other peers we've looked at were, they're all over the board, I would say. Some of them do capital funding where the citizens have to pay for it upfront, or some of them do a combination of it, or they do the annual appropriation typically on the tax bill too. So it's really a clean slate about what the preference of the board would want to proceed. Coming off the last presentation, we offered to give some hypothetical examples to see if there was some consistency. That was emailed to the board three or four weeks ago. And from that, we kinda, as you can see on the presentation, we kinda settled out on about three hundred and seventy-five dollars a parcel, and that was based off of what I would consider the lowest end of a traffic calming measure and probably gonna be the most popular one, which would be a speed hump. And that was based off of a estimated cost of a five thousand dollars per, per speed hump.
Excuse me, speed, which speed, speed hump or bump? Speed hump, okay.
The, the longer one, not the bump that's about a foot wide, yes, ma'am. And to start discussing, a discussion method of it, I proposed out, well, maybe about five hundred dollars a parcel if you wanna consider capital and/or a fifty dollars a per parcel per year fee on the tax bill. So we're looking for feedback and consensus on what type of funding models so we can proceed with developing the program and drafting an ordinance.
All right, any questions at the signboard members?
Real quick, do we give you a list of the streets that we would like in our districts? Or how do you choose?
The, the program is based off of citizen input, where the citizens contact us, and it's very similar to the streetlight program where we rely on the citizens to do a petition amongst the property owners. And once we get the initial petition of, of twenty percent, is what's being proposed, of interest, then we will expend the resources on staff time to develop a draft, call it construction plan or, or can, concept level for the neighborhood or where to put these devices to slow the traffic volume down.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You can move on to number five, I don't.
Okay, let's start.
Counting him in the first half.
No, because I, I've already spoken to him and given him my suggestions, so I'm silent because I've done my part. So I wanted to hear what the rest of the board, because if we move forward, this will never get done. So in order for us to get it done, because we've been talking about this for, well, you guys have been talking about it for years. Before I've been here. And then, since I've been here, we've been talking about it for almost a year now. So before we just move on to the next thing, for the citizens that are watching, can they kinda hear some of your ideas of what are you thinking for your district? Or for the county overall, for you chair, like some ideas?
Well, for District Two, it seems like, as far as the budget and financing all the speed humps, right, is that, I get them mixed up.
The big, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, a bump and a hump.
Would be, uh, more likely, or whatever, especially as far as the, uh, you know, the financing and all, so. Uh, oh, and can you take these things up?
Yes, ma'am, they can be removed.
Okay. So, I, I mean, I would think that, uh, the folk that have, um, shown interest or concern would be the speed hump.
Yes, ma'am. The, the program, if you recall, has a lot of different ideas that we can implement in the neighborhood, ranging from a lot of different price points. Um, the speed hump is the one everyone knows about, um, probably the most prominent in, in Metro Atlanta. Um, so we're, we're thinking the citizens are going to gravitate towards those, but you have other.
Yeah, some neighborhoods that might say they want something a little bit more elaborate.
Yes, ma'am. Um, traffic circles, mean diververs, other items, which.
But they got to have the money.
Well, that's what we're here to try to determine, um, is how to fund this. So the actual element that we put out, proposed to construct in the neighborhood, is going to be a joint effort between a technical analysis and what the citizens in the neighborhoods desire. Obviously, it still don't come back for, to this body to do final approval on it. But the funding mechanism, one, we have to have funds to go construct. Um, currently you do have some funds set aside in the current SPOS program for traffic calming. Um, so there's a capital aspect on that. And then there's a, uh, what I would call rather small maintenance yearly, restriping some things, um, putting up signs again, making sure the asphalt's intact. Um, or you can treat that as, as a quasi-amortization of the capital costs.
So what are the citizens signing up for? Which is, you know, the sign-up, which is similar to the streetlights. So when they sign up with the percentage of the people on the street, so what are they paying for?
That's what we're about to discuss.
That's what we're trying to determine. Like, the, the streetlight petition has a defined cost, 35, 45 dollars. There's a little variation in there, but they know that. That's what we're trying to get to here. So when they go through the petition process, now, of course, they can go through the first part of it, and have us do a study. And then if they like what we're proposing, and are in favor of it, um, they, they can go forward and, and approve the final petition to implement it. That's where the cost comes in. Um, obviously, we, we've talked about before in the past, if the onus is placed on the citizens to fund the capital aspect of that, it's going to be a high cost. If the, if the county is going to bear a large portion or all the construction costs, um, then the citizens are probably going to be more in, in favor of it. Um, I mean, you can, you can go 100% on the county funding the program, or you can put 100% on the citizens, or somewhere in between. That's, that's what we're here trying to, to figure out.
Did anybody read, uh, Director Matarco's email last month? That's my question.
Oh, it was wonderful email. Well, I'm ready to move on to the, whatever the next step is.
Well, that's what he needs to know, so we can vote on it. So we have to, he has to hear from us, what are we in favor of?
I, I will, Commissioner Allen has proposed, um, in an email to us, $50, um, per parcel per year, and the county funds 100% of the upfront construction cost. Um, I can tell you, I had a, a quick conversation with Commissioner Davis, and he was more in favor of a, like a 70-30 split, with the county paying 70% of the construction cost upfront. Um, there, there would be some work to do on that, to try to nail down that cost, if that's the model you want to go with. Um, but that's, this is a critical decision point in order to move this project forward. Um, again, you have the capital costs, and then you have ongoing maintenance, the, the yearly assessment.
Is this in the SPOS?
The current SPOS program, you do have an allocation, it's just shy of $2 million for traffic calming. So this would be applicable, um, but when that money's gone, you, I mean, we can readdress how to fund it at that point.
Will we be able to put, uh, that request in an additional SPOS for traffic calming?
The, the proposed SPOS program for, um, was it 2027, is, is, is broad enough that you could allocate some funding towards it.
Chief Swit, can you, did you have something to say? Can you approach the podium?
So, thanks, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Amberkirk, um, I would strongly encourage us to think a little bit deeper. Speed humps will drastically reduce our ability to effectively respond into residential subdivisions.
And I think, I think that's part of our conversation that we'll have with the, whatever streets are wanting that, we'll let them know those things.
That's what I'm saying. So are y'all, are y'all proposing, as we do, as we go through, let's say for instance, District One or District Two, that, like, as, as the streets come up, or the people from the neighborhood say, hey, I'd like a mini roundabout, more or less, to, as a traffic calming divide. So, or I'd like speed humps. Do we determine by that and by the flow of your fire trucks coming through as well? So those are some of the things we have to determine. Would it be case by case, or how would we do it?
So, just for an example, there's two subdivisions, one in District One, where my fire trucks cannot access a roundabout. We can't get through it.
Got you.
There's another one in District Three, another subdivision, we cannot access the roundabouts. They were not constructed in accordance with the International Fire Code and our recommendation as to radius requirements. So I, I would just ask, please, that if, I, I'm fully in agreement with traffic calming devices, trust me.
I think we all are, yeah.
But I would just ask that we please include us in our feedback. We've adopted minimum internal policies when it comes to civil plan review and traffic calming devices that have already come through. Um, but there's some that come through that don't meet our radiuses for our largest fire trucks, which I have to account for. Therefore, they have been denied and sent back. So that's new construction, but I understand some of this is original subdivision residential streets that are in space now. But I would just, speed humps, all the research that we've done, and it, it drastically hinders our ability to effectively get out, get in, and out as well. It just extremely slows us down.
So while we're talking about emergency vehicles, um, this, this might be a Director Matarco question, but I've seen some speed bumps or speed humps, y'all can figure out the, the difference, uh, that have separations that allow for, uh, emergency vehicles to pass through, uh, but the sizing of them, um, would not allow for a regular car to be able to pass through in, in that spacing. So a fire truck or an ambulance could get through, but a regular car would go over one or both of the, of the humps. Is that, is, are those options included in the?
There is numerous options that you can look at, especially as it comes to potentially adopting traffic calming devices with new residential subdivisions moving forward. There's minimum standards that we can all agree upon, and ensure that our radius requirements and things that we have to require for our largest fire apparatus to safely proceed through that, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Okay, so I have a suggestion. Since we have two options on the table, can we go, who, kind of like, who's in favor for the first option, which was mine, or Commissioner Davis? And then can we do it as a pilot, or is that set in stone?
You saying put a timeframe on it?
Yeah, or is it, is it that? Just cause we got.
I, I would believe you could do something as a pilot. Um, I would, we would need to get, um, Attorney Reed's input on whether a formal ordinance would need to be written before we go to that state. Um, that would be my concern, especially if you're, um, discussing taxation, or, or a, a value on the citizens.
Okay, well, I mean, it's just, okay, so since we only have two, does anyone else have any other proposals, proposals?
Not, not currently available at work sessions.
So what about speed cushions, um, mini roundabouts, and speed tables?
Ye, yes, ma'am, they're, they're all included. From, from the previous discussions, um, you all have decided.
But I'm talking about for, for the trucks.
Yes, ma'am. You, you've, you shied away from dictating the specific ones, and you're going to let the technical experts.
Right, the experts are going to decide what is needed. We just need to make a, make a, come together today on what the funding type would be. So that's the only thing that my Jeff, uh, excuse me, Director Matarco needs, is the funding. That's it.
So I have a follow-up question. Um, I think it's, it's, um, the same between, uh, Commissioner Davis's, uh, recommendation and Commissioner Allen's recommendation. For the $500 a parcel and/or $50, uh, per, per parcel per year, does that amount account for the different types of, uh, traffic calming, or is that specific, is that specific amount saying, well, if that is, if a neighbor, if a neighborhood decides that they, sorry, let me rephrase that. If the technical committee decides speed bumps are, are the best approach for this neighborhood, does that $500 a parcel, does that change if it's speed bumps or traffic circles?
The, the costs that we presented on, um, were based upon speed humps. Um, it would be very, I don't want to say difficult, but you're all over the spectrum if you start laying out different devices. Um, the mean diververs were $10,000 estimate, um, so you, you go up in magnitude. So the, the idea, um, we have, and I think when we start talking about the, if we're going to put anything on the tax bill, is to try to keep something uniform, similar to the streetlight program. Um, if you start making it customized per each parcel, it, it creates a, a burdensome amount of effort to keep those, um, bills straight.
I just want to ensure that we have the flexibility, if there is a particular neighborhood that needs a different level of traffic calming.
It, it's very, the, the idea is very broad, it's very collaborative, um, with public safety and the citizens. And the, at the end of the day, the, the citizens are going to acknowledge a part of the process that they want to proceed forward, that they understanding it could impact public safety response times. Um, but in all fairness, this is not anything new. We're the only county in Metro Atlanta doesn't have a program.
So now we need a program.
So, um.
All right, so come on, y'all.
And this is, this has been in the industry for many years.
I already, listen, I said, I'm gonna come on, no, y'all, come on. I, I did it already.
Roundabout, so.
So, this is wonderful. So what we gonna go with? Listen, I didn't see him, he already told y'all what I suggested, y'all looking at me.
So it sounds like, um, perhaps, Attorney Reed maybe can create a resolution for both options of Commissioner Allen's suggestion, Mr. Davis's suggestion.
Commissioner Allen said, get to the point, let's get something done.
Listen, I'm off a negotiation. So if we're going to go with 70-30, or whatever, I'm fine with that. I just, we need to do something.
And put it on the agenda for next week, so we can make a decision.
That might be a little difficult to write whole ordinance in a day or two here.
Mr. Reed, would you like to come up?
Or in November, just by the end of the year.
The end of our term, at least, huh?
Stop that.
Good evening. Thank you all for the confidence that you all have in me, that I can craft an ordinance.
I didn't say a word. I just told you, come on up.
Craft an ordinance from scratch in 24 hours.
I have absolute faith in you.
I, I appreciate that. I knew that's why you had suggested that. But, um, but I think more realistically, I probably could get something done by the first, um, meeting in, um, November. I believe, if I would talk with Director Matarco, make sure that it meets that. But if certainly not by then, I would say by the middle of November at the latest.
So what specific language do you need from the board to be able to craft that, that ordinance, and, and make sure that you have the language that you need?
Well, I came in on the tail end, but if I could, if you've answered the questions that Director Matarco has, if you have not, then that would make it difficult to draft something. But if you have answered the questions and have some sort of framework, then he and I can sit down and take that framework that the board has identified and, uh, put something together.
Any more questions at this time?
No, we need answers from y'all. Which I think is 70-30, nothing?
If we do 70-30, I think the follow-up question to that is, are we saying 70-30 for the capital cost, or are we saying, um, 70, 70% is on the county for the capital cost, and then the 30% would be amortized, um, over however many years of maintenance?
Can you repeat the two recommendations again? And then, then maybe we can, they can just go decide.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Um, of course, Commissioner Allen was proposing the $50 per parcel per year, um, with the county funding 100% of the initial construction costs. And a, a, again, I'm cautious of trying to speak for Commissioner Davis here, but he mentioned a 70-30 split of the capital construction. So that would be the county paying 70% of the upfront cost, and then the citizens paying 30%. Um, I did not have a conversation with him about if, uh, there's a yearly fee associated with that or not.
If this was a concert, they had the answers planned for the outfits. This was a concert or, uh, a movie in the park, or a fun festival, we'll have some answers. But okay, well, I guess.
You want to go to, okay.
Whatever you want to.
Okay.
So we're ready to move on to the pedestrian safety.
Before you move on. So since I heard silence, it's going to be very difficult for me to draft a.
There's going to be no resolution.
I just wanted to make that clear, that I can't draft something if I don't know what the parameters are.
Thank you.
Well, what I heard, you, you were, you asked to draft two different things. So why, I mean, why can't we just decide on one?
Yes, that's what we need to decide on one.
And not, uh, have you draft two, two things.
Let's do that, let's decide.
I like, do 50, 50, 50?
I like the idea of 100% of the capital outlet. The funding is already available.
Okay, so if y'all don't like 100%, okay, let's, okay, so 90, 10, 20, so you like the 70-30? Okay, so let's go with that. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. Let's go.
We decided on 70-30.
Let's go. Let's run with that. No more questions.
I'm sorry.
Please, no more questions.
70-30 on the capital, but no yearly?
$50 yearly per parcel.
In addition to a 70-30 on the capital.
Well, we know that at this point?
Well, the 50 is for the maintenance, ongoing maintenance.
You're not going to know the construction cost for the capital, but the, the, the yearly cost, per the examples we gave out, um, all hit fairly consistent. There was a good average there, wasn't a, a big spread of what we were looking at. So I think the, the $50 or, or a, something in that range is a, is a decent, good figure.
Right. And I was holding off, too, because that does need to be considered, what Chief was saying, as far as.
Y, yes, ma'am. Um, rightfully so. Um, I know they have concerns, Police Department has concerns, too. I mean, it's a collaborative effort. Um, and at the end of the day, if the citizens vote that they want a bunch of speed humps in their neighborhood, and they live at the back of the subdivision, um, that's, that's something they have to hear to.
But we still have to have that conversation with our residents.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. It, it's a part of the interaction process of, um, talking directly with them about what it means and what it would take to get in.
Okay, there we go.
All right, we ready to go on?
Oh, my goodness, thank you, yes. On to the next thing, all right.
Does Chuck have, Attorney Reed has what he needs?
Between Director Matarco and I, I think we should be good.
We're good.
All right.
Okay. The Terrible of Our Pedestrian Safety Project. This is the, the big project we're working on, on Terra Boulevard. It's 11 and a half miles long, it adds, right now, five-foot-wide sidewalks, uh, street and pedestrian lighting. Um, its majority is in unincorporated Clayton County, about 60% of it, and it also falls within Jonesboro and Lovejoy. Currently, we're in the design process, it's actually been going on for a little over a year now.
Is that with the county and GDOT?
GDOT.
It's the county doing the project, and since it has federal money in it, currently we have to follow all GDOT and federal processes. So you can say it's their oversight.
Cause they spending money, so I just want to make sure they spending it on tar.
Yes, ma'am. Um, but the current schedule shows roughly around October of 2028, completing the design and right-of-way acquisition, um, process, then moving into construction in springtime of '29. Then moving into construction in springtime of twenty-nine with a estimated completion towards the end of twenty thirty. That's our current schedule right now. So I apologize if this slide is a little overwhelming, this is the funding side of the house. I split up into the different phases. Currently, we're finishing up the design of the phase one. That was a scoping aspect and not to get into the details of what Georgia DOT and FHBA requires us to do, but there's certain milestones, and this gets us prominently through the first milestone. Then last board meeting, you actually approved the design for phase two, which at this point takes us all the way up into the right-of-way acquisition and finishes the design. Then I laid out a couple extra or the next phases. As you can see, the the funding percentages drastically change. Right now, the right-of-way acquisition, which is estimated almost five point seven million dollars, has zero funds in it from the federal or state level, it's a hundred percent local funding. A smaller phase environmental, there's some permits and some other aspects that we have to deal with, is still the same funding mechanism, zero percent federal, a hundred percent on the local. Now, if you move into the construction phase right now, the construction estimate is, as you can see, twenty-five million dollars approximately. There's six point five million in federal and as you can see, a whole bunch of money on the local side, nineteen million dollars. So that's where we currently stand today. Obviously, there's a big ticket on the county to pay for this project. We are constantly trying to get more money from the state and federal process. If you look at this slide, the top part of it is kind of the summary of the overall project. If you look at it from a very high-level standpoint, the total project right now has got a value of around thirty-two million dollars. Nine point three is federal and almost twenty-six of that is local money. Of note, you will see next board meeting, an application process to go after grant funds that GDOT is requesting applications for right now. It's called CMAC, it's congestion mitigation air quality funds for the technical side. Yes, ma'am. But we're proposing in the timeframe they're looking at is we're going to be requesting to fund the right-of-way acquisition at traditional eighty percent federal, twenty percent local. So that would be in consideration for for y'all to bless the application in the next meetings. But we are trying the best we can at department level to petition GDOT and ARC to give us as much money as possible on this project. At the, the next.
Are we, excuse me, are we asking for a vote before we find out from GDOT and ARC?
A a part of the process is they want a commitment of the funding match a part of the application process. So you have to bless that by resolution in order for them to even consider. So the milestone in the design phase one is called a concept report. It summarizes the whole project, pulls everything together, it gets all the players involved, it gets the costs aligned. One of the comments that was received during that concept team meeting was the desire to widen the sidewalk. Currently, it's it's programmed at five foot wide, and that's typically what GDOT installs when they do install sidewalk along their roads, it's five foot wide. Commissioner Davis has been a strong advocate of wider sidewalks, and he was the one who proposed to widen them to ten to twelve feet wide. So ARC and Georgia DOT are right now waiting on the county to provide feedback about if we want to proceed with that. I think especially ARC would be a strong proponent to have this wider sidewalk because they view that as a trail component. But of course, wider sidewalks mean more money. Our consultant who's working on the project, we asked him to take a quick stab at it, so this is a as a guesstimate. He he looked at it and said, if you take this section of Terra Boulevard that Georgia DOT just widened, and that has traditional five-foot wide sidewalk on the east side of the road and a ten to twelve-foot wide sidewalk trail on the west side of the road, if you take that and apply it north of that area up through Jonesboro to Upper Riverdale Road, and if you apply it south towards McDonough Road and Lovejoy, his his preliminary swipe at it was an additional seventeen and a half million dollars. For instance, one of your, the Justice Creek Bridge, that's just north of one thirty-eight, it's not wide enough. So you're either reconstructing the bridge to make it wider or you're actually building a standalone pedestrian bridge be alongside of that. And that's probably three, four, five million dollars depending on what the environmental concerns are of a wider bridge. And he's estimating it's going to be an additional year, year and a half added to the process to go back and redo some of the studies that have been done. And the more intense studies, when you start getting into streams and rivers, that the timeframe it's going to take to get through that process.
They say no question is a dumb question, but how many people use all that length of Tara Boulevard as a walking whatever, how how many people would actually use that? Does anybody know? I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't.
It's very difficult to get counts on pedestrian activity. It's not like cars where it's easy to count in automatic means. Obviously, it varies.
I mean, they spend millions and millions of dollars and nobody's using the sidewalk, that that's all I'm.
The northern more more section where the land use is a more commercial and it's more of a walkable area today, you would think that experiences greater number of pedestrians, especially where the motor transit routes are. But there there are no specific counts.
Right, and if if there were more commercial or whatever, I think that's in our zoning that they are responsible for the sidewalk.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Now granted, how it gets implemented, you're on a Georgia DOT right-of-way, so Georgia DOT is the one in charge. But yes.
Should be paying, should be paying.
Any development in any new development in the county requires sidewalk, yes, ma'am.
Right.
So what what's on the table right now is it's a five-foot wide sidewalk on both sides of the street is what the concept entails. That's what is on slated to go forward for that to thirty-two approximate million dollar value. Again, I'm not trying to speak for Commissioner Davis, but he is a strong advocate that he thinks these things need to be wider. And it's.
Which is an extra seventeen million.
Five.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am, it's it's quite an expensive endeavor. And we're at a point where some, a decision has to be made to move the project forward to the next stage. I can't begin to tell you the, I'll just call it red tape, that we have to go through on the federal process to, I mean, diarrhea to get through these stages. So it, this isn't something if we say we're going to wait six weeks, the project's going to be put on hold for six weeks.
So so what what is the average? Is is the sidewalk without all of this, that the water, whatever, sidewalk and all, the so many millions of dollars, what is the, what would be the length or width or whatever?
It, what's proposed right now is five feet wide. That's that's standard walking width for for pedestrians, basically two people abreast or one person can walk side by side without having to step offside. That's pretty much industry average.
And I can see what Commissioner Davis is talking about in a residential area someplace, but a long stretch that may or may not be used in all. I I think we need to think about spending an extra seven million on something like that.
And I'm presenting it as sidewalk. It, you can construe it as a part of the trail system too, or a path system, however you want to term it. At the end of the day, it's just a wider area for walking and bicycling and could be a part of the county's recreational trail program.
So we need, the decision needs to be made?
Yes, ma'am, they are looking for an indication to move forward. Right now, I will say, obviously, we don't know where all the money's going to come from for the thirty-two million dollars as it's currently designed, programmed and envisioned. I definitely don't know where the money's going to come if we decide to to move it to the wider sidewalks. That's something that will have to be determined coming up in the next several years. But in order to advance the project now and proceed with the design, it's, I I don't want to say five feet makes a difference, but when you're, from a technical standpoint, it does make a big difference, especially when we start talking about impacts to drainage systems, signs, utility poles. When you start really looking at what's on the side of the road, a couple feet does matter.
Alright, board members, what would you all like to do, would you all like to move forward on this?
What's your suggestion, Mr. Tako?
I am here to do what the board desires.
No, what is your professional engineering degree tells you? It's about the money.
I I will, I will say this. If the desire of the board is to put a trail or a path along Terra Boulevard, this is your opportunity. I don't foresee you coming back in ten years and saying, I'm going to rip up the sidewalk and put a path there. Now, whether you want a trail path along Terra Boulevard, that could be another consideration. You do have it from State Route fifty-four south to Terra Road. So there is a section of existing footprint there. But if you want to use this opportunity, now would be the time to seize it. Now, I'm saying that without a dollar in this fight, that obviously we all will have to deal with that.
But as the professional recommendation.
Can I ask a funding question?
Certainly.
So if you had you had mentioned that either ARC or GDOT, when they, if we decide to move from five feet to ten feet, then they consider that an option for trails? So do you think that there will be additional funding available, moving from five feet to ten feet? If we, I don't, designate the area that that this will be, you know, trail opportunity? Could we find specific funding around that?
It's definitely not going to hurt.
Is it available?
It's it's definitely not going to hurt. You're getting into the nuances of how programs are funded and dealing with, trying not to get too technical, the ARC tip, the five-year program versus a longer-term program and how they allocate their funding. There are certain times that we can request additional funding and we have done so. That's how we got the funding for the phase two design. So we will continuously up to construction, keep on asking for additional funds through ARC, GDOT, or anyone who will listen to us. Obviously, this is a state highway, so at some point, I mean, personally, would think the state would want to put some skin in the game other than using the federal funds. But that's that's not a situation that we're going to deal with right now. We're just trying to get it moving forward. Obviously, without a set of plans that is designed and right-of-way acquired, there is no construction at that point.
Right, so I had a question for COO Stanford. It was just around the the trail study, I don't have my iPad on me, but the twenty-eleven trail study, was, were there any areas off fif- sorry, fifty-four, off Terra Boulevard that were identified as potential locations for trail in Clayton County?
No, ma'am, not in initial, the Clayton Connects.
That's the one.
Path system really contemplated there being a crossover for Battle Creek to go from, it went from park to park, so if you think about Long Creek Park, that would have gotten us to Justice Creek Park, and then ultimately look at ways to connect it to the Haightville Trail System that eventually would have connected to the Belt Line. So the idea there's, talking about there's something called Concept Twenty-One. Concept Twenty-One talks about this intermodal trail system from the city of Atlanta that always goes all the way down to Rockdale County to the monastery. But no, the areas in question with the LCI study did not contemplate trail connection. However, to Mr. Matarco's point, if there's an opportunity to connect it to some other elements further south in Commissioner Allen's district, to get us to the the river's edge component to connect to that trail system, then there could be an opportunity for a vision connection from that end. But everything is always predicated upon whether I got the money to do it, that's really where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, are there any other questions at this time?
Well, I mean, that information helped me in my decision. I I say that this is an oppo- this is a great opportunity for for us to go ahead and move from the five feet to the ten feet, especially as we continue to expand the commercial footprint on Terra Boulevard. If we, if, what is it, if we build it, they will walk?
I I will, I will offer this. COO Stanford and I sat, and I called this morning with the mayors of Jonesboro and Lovejoy. And I think they had the same consternation as y'all do about desiring it, but the realization of the funding. So they didn't say to a hundred percent go forward, but they definitely would desire the larger sidewalk and they think if we're going to really be serious, now's the time to do it.
Well, I desire it, but we know, we know we have to look at the funding, so. I mean, we can go forward as far as we can go and then see where we are with the funding, that's my.
Are they putting anything in?
Yeah.
Jonesboro and Lovejoy? Yes, ma'am, they they have both.
She's a debt collector.
I'll, I'll.
Like she was a debt collector.
Great question. Speaking to both Mayor Flewellan as well as Mayor Sarter, they understand that they have funding challenges as well. But part of the question both asks whether or not they are anticipating money in their twenty twenty-six SPOSS allocation. Both municipalities have asked for sidewalk and roadway improvements in their requests. So they do recognize that there's some funding there, how far that would take them, we're not quite sure. So that gave them a little reprieve, recognizing that there is at least money being asked for in the new SPOSS program. And hopefully that will help them, be able to help us carry on the expenses associated with this joint partnership with the county. And we've committed to having some conversation with them and the city councils to provide additional updates to them collectively about where we stand with the city of Lovejoy as well as with the city of Jonesboro.
So that area would or would not include where we're planning the new office?
The new admin building. It it will, it will me, it will go down that portion of of Terra, the question is, it would be on that side. But we do have some amenities associated with the admin building that would be other recreational opportunities to take advantage of, so it will be a good complement to what we're doing.
I have a question that's a bit of a stretch because it's about the funding that went towards the, where are you going?
CEO, will you please approach the bench, ma'am?
It was, for for either of you all, it was about the the federal funding that was designated to the Flint River Trails. And, you know, if, again, just thinking long-term as we're building connectivity and as as the metro Atlanta is building connectivity, I'm just wondering if there are going to be, you know, funding opportunities if we say, well, okay, expansions on Terra Boulevard will eventually lead further up to connect to, I can't think of where the the entrance to the Flint River Trail would would be.
Right.
There's some connectivity there.
So, yes, ma'am, all that is part of a quote-unquote master plan for trail development throughout not just the South Metro area, but also the whole metro region. That's that part of that Concept Twenty-One that I was talking about. ARC has played an integral role in helping identify additional funding. We all are a little skittish right now depending upon the federal stance in place with with funding. However, there are greater opportunities now that we have identified other partners to come to the table. And when they look at it from a metro concept, it's easier to get the funding when they know multiple jurisdictions are working collectively together to get the funding. So to Jeff's point earlier, it's hard to say where we are right now in identifying the money, but we do recognize there's others that's at the table that recognize there's some value in place and we just need to be at the table to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Sounds like this decision needs to be made.
Some direction needs to be given to keep advancing the project, yes, ma'am.
I did give you direction, I said, y'all could, did you have any more direction to give?
No.
So what's your direction as well?
To continue, I think that's what we heard.
We say continue.
From our, from our expert.
Yeah.
Continue with.
Continue with moving forward with the five, from the five feet to the ten feet.
Okay.
And let's look at the money, let's look at the other municipalities, what they will be helping out with as well, and we go from there.
Okay, one, one question. With the wider sidewalks or trail, are we okay with just one side that matches what GDOT has previously installed? Or do you want to go both sides of the street?
Go bigger.
Yeah, we need both sides.
Because that seventeen goes up higher.
Yeah.
So, okay, so.
And I know this may be a different question.
Does that double the seventeen million?
Does that, does that double?
Yes, ma'am, it's, it's maybe not double, but that even goes up even higher.
Okay.
So, okay. Well, I'm just trying to see how we determine the bigger, the most for our book, the most advantageous side for the sidewalk to be on? Is there some way to determine that?
I mean, we, we would be looking at land use and stuff. If you want, if you didn't want on both sides and you only want it on one side, the knee-jerk would be to look at what Georgia DRT, Georgia DRT did and put it on the west side. Of course, if you move it back and forth, you've got crossings.
What side would that be if you?
The west, if you're heading north, it would be on the left-hand side.
So I have a question, one more question. We talked about BRT too. What is Marla going to do as well, you know, so let's think about that as well.
More money, more problems. So there's a couple things there with the BRT buildout because hopefully that will help attract some additional.
Money.
Commercial that will help defray some of the costs that therefore we have more money coming into our coffers from a sales tax perspective that will help us a little as we tend to taking care of some of this capital outlay that's needed. That's a little further down the road, but.
It's coming though.
There's some additional.
They can help build out the other side.
That's right, so. The recommendation would be, to your point, Commissioner, it may be in our best interest, recognizing that we haven't found another seventeen-five, to at least commit to that now and recognize whether or not we have design money later to at least look at what the other side would be, even though we may not be able to do the construction at this time. But knowing that we're going to have to commit a dollar amount north of seventeen-five and we don't know where that's coming from, even if we talk about the design phase and find out the design money, it may give us a better opportunity than when we do have construction money in place, at least while we have the design for, to, to build out on the other side.
All right, so we are moving forward, correct, ladies and gentlemen of the board? All right, we have consensus, thank you. All right, is there any, anything else, any more business tonight that we need to discuss?
It took us a year to do traffic coming in for that five thousand dollars and thirty-two million in ten minutes, I feel in some type of way.
All right.
This future thirteen.
If there's no more business of the board at this time, we are going to adjourn this work session. And thank you all for coming out tonight and have a wonderful rest of your evening, the time is 7:23 PM. Have an awesome night.